Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting of the zoning board to order.
We can just jump into that once we get to the correct matter. He had a question on the Bailey matter. I think it's better to discuss once we get to that part of the agenda. Do you want me to do a roll call for you, Chair? All right, Member Galloway, you stay here. A member Doig, a member Clutier, Bacalade, Ross Pelletier, Ron Pelletier, or Ian Adi. We have a full complement of the board present tonight, five regular members and two alternates.
I'd like to welcome our new member, Mr. Galloway.
You can do this every meeting?
Let the minister reflect that we have a full board. Fire exits to the rear of the building will take you outside. The doors behind us take you into the building, so that's not an applicable fire exit, and it's not marked that way anyways. I would like to, the members have seen, have a copy of the previous minutes of last month, actually two months ago. What say you?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that we approve the minutes from the June meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Goes nay, the ayes have it. Old business.
This is regarding the matter of Julie Bailey, owner, Marjorie Bailey, or applicant at Sessions Platt, 53 lot 24, 1340 Main Street. Applicant is seeking a use variance to construct a single-family home in the I-1 zone. The proposed single-family home will be 10 feet from the north property line, where 30 feet is required, and 20 feet from the south property line, where 30 feet is required. Therefore, the applicant is also seeking a dimensional variance. Before you begin, Mr. Cronin, one procedural item that's worth noting, this has been in front of the board on a number of meetings. I think it's worth noting which board members have been present when testimony has been offered in front of the board. That's helpful for us to know who is still a voting member on this matter. Tom, maybe you can help revise this. I know that this was in front of us in June, so June 4th is a date. It was in front of us prior to that. Do you have the date handy, Tom? Was it the meeting before in May?
Well, Thomas Cronin, 1070 Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the owner and applicant. So this matter was heard on April 2nd, 2025, and present at that meeting were Chairman Lachaleid, Member Ian Adi, Member Keith Pludia, Lenny Doig, Ronald Pelletier, and Ross Pelletier. Then it was heard again on June 4th, 2025, and present that evening were Chairman Lachaleid, Member Ian Adi, Member Keith Pludia, Member Lenny Doig, and Member Ross Pelletier. So the members voting on this application will be Chairman Lachaleid, Member Ian Adi, Keith Pludia, Lenny Doig, and Ross Pelletier.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Are you going to give testimony, Counselor?
It's hard to stop me.
Could you raise your right hand again? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
Great. So as Mr. McLean just mentioned, this is a continued public hearing from April 2025 and June 4th, 2025. At the end of the June 4th, 2025 meeting, this board requested that we stake out the proposed home on the property at 1340 Main Street. Coventry Survey did stake it out. I went by today, so it's still there, still staked out there. And I understood from the zoning staff that we weren't going to have an actual site visit where we had an agenda and went as a group, but that each of the members would go at their own discretion. So that's how I understand the approach that was taken to that. As Mr. McLean introduced the matter, we are here seeking a use variance to knock down an existing barn and construct a new single-family home on a lot that's in the industrial I-1 zone. And we are seeking dimensional relief for side setbacks, seven feet of relief on the south side. So 23 feet of setback with 30 is required, and eight feet of relief to the north side, where we have 22 feet of setback with 30 feet is required. The board's heard quite a bit of testimony on this. The gist of the testimony, I guess, is that the property had some troublesome tenants a few years ago. Those tenants have been removed, and the property has been cleaned up, and presently, it's in good shape. It's in good shape. So as these meetings have been spread out due to the vagaries of summer, I'll give the board a quick refresher on what we're here for, and then we can discuss what, if anything, the observations of the board were regarding the stakeout, if that's acceptable to you, Mr. Chairman.
Proceed.
Thank you.
You read that?
Okay. So the use variance is an unusual request for this board, but what we have is a side of Main Street, Route 117, that is zoned, you know, from one end to the other along Patuxet River as industrial and not used in that way, right? It's filled with houses. So we're here to seek to continue or expand the residential use in the industrial zone in addition to that side setback relief. The existing use of this property is residential, pre-existing, non-conforming. There's two residential homes on the property. The frontage on Main Street is about 100 feet. The lot had previously, you know, many years ago, been two lots. It was merged into one lot by the town of Coventry. As a result, has an irregular shape, about 100 feet, about 100 foot back from the street. It expands to 148 feet wide, and then tapers to only 48 feet while, when it meets the Patuxet River. So both of the existing homes are on what was formerly the front lot, and there's an existing barn in the center of the lot, right about where the lot expands to that 148-foot width. That barn, as part of our proposal, would be removed. So we demolished the barn, and we construct a single-family home at the widest part of the lot, where it's 148 feet wide, tapering down to 148 in the rear. Marjorie Bailey will reside in the home. It's going to be a single-story home, as five bedrooms, as noted previously to the board. The properties surrounding this lot are also in the industrial zone, but are also used for residential use. To the south is a single-family home, a residential condominium with 38 units and 19 buildings on a single lot. To the north are two single-family homes, one behind the other, coming from Main Street. Across 117 are a mix of uses between Georgia's Transmission, a couple residential homes, and then Payne Field also is right there. And then the most important physical feature is the Patuxet River, which runs along the western or rear boundary. So that's the setting. So our lot is pre-existing, non-conforming residential, and most of the other lots also in this industrial zone are residential. The dimensional variance comes from the application of the industrial setbacks. So despite the fact that it's residential use currently, if we're going to amend or change the use and occupation of this lot, we would have to require it to use the industrial setbacks, and those are 30 foot on each side. So that's where that request for the seven and eight feet to the north and south comes from. So the variance requirements are very familiar to this board, but we'll just run through them quickly. The hardship is due to the characteristics of the land. I mentioned that the land expands and then narrows, and there's a significant 200-foot setback buffer to the Patuxet River and in additional homes on the front of the lot. So the placement of this proposed home is placed in the widest part of the lot. But the characteristics of the actual boundaries of the lot and of the requirements of the Patuxet River are not the result, are the result of the characteristics of the land, excuse me. The hardship is not the result of the action of this applicant. As mentioned earlier, the town merged these lots probably because this back lot doesn't have any frontage, right? I mean, that makes, I'm not saying it was a bad idea, but that's what happened. And then the DEM changes the buffering rules to the Patuxet River on a regular basis, but they keep getting larger, not smaller. That's the key thing. And then this will not change the residential character of the neighborhood, right? This is a, despite the I-1 zone, it's a residential neighborhood, and both sides have multiple houses from the street, including the condominium and the next-door neighbor where there's two houses from Main Street back to the river. And then this hardship is more than a mere inconvenience. So this is a good fit for the usual things that we talk about: public water, public sewer, plenty of off-street parking, not impacting the Patuxet River or the required setback, good access to Main Street, which is a, you know, heavily trafficked road, state highway. So it has only a minor setback, variance is needed. This is a good fit for the stuff that you and I usually talk about when we appear before this board. Now, the use of variance has a slightly different and higher standard, but this, as noted, will not change the characteristics of the neighborhood. This lot is located in a densely populated residential area. There's no mistaking that, and this would be consistent with that present situation. An actual industrial use would be harmful, or inimical, to use the word that's in the ordinance, right, to the existing residential uses and families that live in the homes around it if we were to try to use it as the zoned industrial use. In addition, an industrial use would be difficult to place, given the proximity to the Patuxet River. So when we're talking about putting in a house, you know, we have public water and public sewer. We're not even worried about a septic, but when you start talking about an industrial use, it would have more impact on the potential in the buffer into the river. So the clients have made good-faith efforts to clean up this property and limit the negative activity at the property, and have corrected it for a good amount of time now. You've requested that the house be, you know, staked out, and Coventry Survey completed that. And so I'm interested in hearing the impressions of the board as to what they saw when they went out. Thank you.
Remember the board have a question for Counselor?
When were the lots merged? Do you know?
I don't know.
Zoning regulations?
It was, the tax assessor's office had it as two, and then one. No, they didn't have any notes. No.
Basically, my understanding was several lots in the town that have butted each other, especially if they were non-conforming. In an effort to make them more conforming, they put them together. They didn't really consult with the owners of the lots. They just said the way it's going to be. And they had enough, my understanding is they'd had the, not freedom, but they had the right to do that, and that's what they did.
Yeah, just, I mean, the rear lot where the barn is, you know, if it existed, would be, would have no frontage, right? So I mean, it's not, you know, I'm not going to stand up here and say we should resurrect that lot. Problematic.
So I guess I'll start it off. They've done a great job, cleaned up a lot of stuff. I checked out stakes. It's pretty much where I thought it was going to be anyways. Still no, I'm still having problems with three residential structures on one lot. Is there any movement about the possibility of tearing down the middle home that was presently unoccupied?
They would like to keep that home, Mr. Chairman. It's been occupied as recently as November of 2024. I understand, you know, going out there myself, that the windows are boarded up, and it, you know, might not look like it's in its best condition, but it has been recently occupied. It's, it can be rehabilitated and used, and they would like to take that option.
Like I said, I have a lot of trouble with three houses.
There are, in that area, along Main Street, there are other lots that have, you know, multiple houses on them. And, you know, this is all historical, right? I mean, like you just discussed with Mr. Cludia, the town used its power to add and subtract lot lines, you know, to fit what had been developed. And it might not be ideal, but as far as the character of Main Street from the quarter of South Main to the, to like, say, the railroad, the new coffee shop, the, you know, this is the character of that area. There's multiple homes on small lots. There's multiple homes on one lot. It's a densely populated residential area.
Keith, got anything?
I went out Monday, and I applaud the applicants because it does look, the property does look a lot better than when I was there a year ago or so. So I commend her on that. I observe whether the property or the new building is going to be staked out. And like Russ said, it's basically where we thought it would be. And again, I'm with Russ that the third occupied dwelling on that same lot is less than ideal, in my opinion.
I feel the same way, especially three lot, three units that are all within the setback. It's not like this is a four-acre parcel where all kind of in the middle, and it's like a family compound, something like that. All of them would have to come in front of us if they were to be built today, or any one of them in their current locations. So it seems like a third one, it's the development next door, another example, the development next door, they had to go to front of planning and put all the stormwater drains and all that stuff, and the roads in, where this is just kind of flopping them in and avoiding that cost. That's the impression that I get from it. It might not be the applicant's intent, it's just the way it looks. Like Russ was saying, I would be in favor of approving it with the, that one long house removed.
The rest of the committee here, I've been there a couple of times. It's a lot better than it was before. Clean, unworthiness wise, but I just think you're going to put a beautiful new building up, then you're going to have that one. I just think it's too much on one piece of property.
You want to say anything there, Mr. Pelletier? No, I didn't see it. No, I'm just, I'm just, you can still talk. You can't vote, that's all.
From what I've seen, I have to agree with the rest of the votes, that that house should be removed. It doesn't make any sense to be on it with the others, right?
We'd have, yep. You got anything? You got anything? Can we still open it up to comment?
Yeah, it's, it is, we, we continued it, leaving open though.
Make sure I was doing it. Thank you, sir. Would somebody from the audience like to speak on behalf of this one way or the other, either for or against it? Oh, I thought she was getting up to speak. Gentleman, white hat. Have your hand up, sir. Raise your right hand. First I'll type your name and address.
John Budzian, six Manning Court, Coventry, Illinois, zero two eight one six.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
You have to say.
Um, not.
Is the microphone green light on or is it red?
Yeah, it's a good, yeah.
Right into the mic, you're good.
Just near that lot, there's multi senior center there with multiple houses close together. I don't know how many, I didn't count them, but I don't see the, the problem of having on that piece of property, which the barn is going to get torn down anyhow. I don't see the reason why they can't have it and they got grandfather rights probably on that too. But as long as they're tearing that barn down, I don't see any reason why they can have a, a house built there. That doesn't make sense. There's so many houses in that condo there, well.
I don't think you can compare, in my opinion, I don't think you can compare both projects together. The project with the, the housing that's next door to it is, it's all brand new, they pretty much all look alike and it's been engineered correctly through the town to have that many homes. The one next door is, in my opinion, it's like apples and oranges. It's not, it's the same, but it's not, they're both fruit, but they're not the same. But that's just my opinion, but I thank you for your comment.
Well, you know, my opinion is that, you know, the, the houses that are there are grandfathered and they should be considered as that.
I don't believe we have the word grandfathering in the clauses anymore, but thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Have your name and address, please.
My name is Patricia Boishman. I am from Nine Rivers Edge Drive.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. My husband and I continue to strongly oppose the request for the dimensional variance so as to build the planned structure that would bring the dwelling that much closer to our property fence line. Our concerns are well documented from the previous two hearings that you have conducted and we are here again tonight to urge you to not to grant the variance. I appreciate the fact that in the last session, you had an interest and wanted to understand better the concept of the shared living arrangements. And while I provided an overview of that information, tonight I have given you a copy of the document that you can find on the website, the Behavioral Health Developmental Disabilities and Hospitals website, BUDA, as we call it. And that can provide you with accurate information about shared living arrangements. That said, I want to circle back to a comment that the owner applicant had made concerning shared living arrangements in the last session. She stated it and implied that shared living is for people whom no one else wants. And that is very far from the truth. In fact, it's an insult to the families who are working very hard to ensure that their loved ones have a home once they can no longer provide for their loved ones. People who are seeking shared living arrangements are families who are themselves aging or who may have medical issues and they want to ensure that their loved ones have a home that they are going to go to. In fact, there is a tremendous amount of time and energy that goes into the matching process. It means that there are numerous visits that happen between the adult with the disability and the people who are opening their homes to the adult. Now, that can be in a couple, an individual or an entire family. But there is time and effort that goes into this and it cannot be said that no one wants these people. That's very unfair.
Thank you. Could you kind of briefly go over your, you said that it's been documented about your concerns about it. Could you, could you refresh it for us?
Absolutely. Our concerns is that in the past, the tenants who were residents there, and as we learned in the past, were family members that were evicted. They had numerous complaints. We had numerous complaints. We had made numerous phone calls to the police of yelling, screaming, swearing, of intense arguments that went on to the point that it was frightening some of our residents in the condominium community. As you know, many of us have come into there to age in place. Some of the members of our community are in their eighties and there are few in their nineties who reside in that back row. Bringing that pending development closer to our property line, we see this as more harm to our community. These people came into Rivers Edge to age in place and to enjoy their years and not to be confronted with undue stress. I can't tell you how frightening that can be when you are hearing yelling and screaming and swearing. And as I mentioned, we learned that these people who were there were members of the family that were evicted. And so our fear and concern is that if there is no oversight and it was clear there wasn't any oversight in the past of these people living there, that we're going to be dealing with that once again. Now, in shared living arrangements, there, there's an oversight because there are agencies that work with the families. And I'd like to know if Marjorie Bailey, the applicant who is providing a home to three adults with developmental or disabilities, what agency she might be working with? That would provide tremendous amount of reassurance to us on the other side of the fence that there is oversight, that their needs are being met and we do not have to be concerned and worried about the fact that we're going to be dealing with the ongoing noise and disturbance of the peace. That's our concern. So we're here to urge you to consider that. Once you make a decision on such a variance, I mean, it has consequences for all of us, for the entire community. And again, the folks that are living in the condominium development, they are, are there to live their final years without undue stress. And we'd like to see that continue. So I appreciate your time and your work. Thank you.
Got a couple of comments on that. Well, just to general.
Okay.
The applicant isn't here, they've done a great job cleaning up the property over the past. I did the site visit on Monday and it was, looked, it was cleaner. We can't not approve because they had past tenants that were bad. They did evict the bad tenants, for lack of better words. And the eviction process is hard. You can't just say, hey, get out of my house because you're swearing in the backyard or you've had the police come. You can't just do that. They, tenants have a lot more rights to your property than you do as the owner. They fix that problem, that's, that's fine. As far as their qualifications for shared living arrangements, they're not here for that. They're here for variances for the setbacks in multiple property, multiple houses in industrial zoning. It wouldn't matter if it's a five bedroom house for shared living services or if it's a five bedroom house for the five people sitting in the front row. It's the same to me anyways. We can't, we can't, just, we can't say, well, we don't want you to have a shared living, but if you want to put the five of you there, that's a different story. We don't, we can't say we don't think you're qualified for it. If someone has a problem with that, that, I would assume they would take it up with the state or whoever monitors that. That's not us. So I just want to make that clear. I'm not making my decision based off of that information, strictly for the variances, strictly for the multiple houses on one property.
Ma'am? Please state your name and address.
Margaret Shelton, twelve Rivers Edge Drive, Coventry.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do. I'm a little confused. I know you said you're just basing it on the dimensional variances. I'm concerned about the use variance as well and not about the past either. I'm confused at how we're classifying this. You're saying it's a single family home and they're saying, well, it's like having foster kids to have people with disabilities come into your house, same thing, you get a stipend, whatever, and you take care of them. However, foster kids are under eighteen, they're not legal adults. Is there some form of guardianship here? And if we're calling it a single family, under the comprehensive plan, how are you going to go forward to classify that? You couldn't find it under the code. You were looking at assisted living, you were looking at nursing homes. There was nothing that was there. So I just want to know how you're planning on going forward with that part of it.
To go back with, with what my colleague just said, we're not, we're not here for that right now. Right now, we're here.
I thought that's a use variance, though.
Well, it, it really.
Use is, under a use variance is how you're using that property.
Doug?
So the applicant is seeking a single family home. What happens inside of that single family home does not have bearing on the use variance. It's a use variance because it's an industrial zone and they're adding a third residential structure. So it doesn't have, the, the activity inside the home is not what's making it a use variance. It's the fact that they're seeking a residential use, expanding a residential use in a zone that naturally does not allow it.
Is that going to affect you people going forward under a comprehensive plan? I'm, I'm confused, that's why I'm up here. I just don't understand because the last time we were here, Carrie was going through all of the things that she was looking up and we weren't even calling it single family. As a matter of fact, Mr. Cronin called it a single level home instead at that first, at that meeting, because he started to say single family, he says, oh, wait a minute, it's single level. So what is it? I just don't understand. I'm confused if you can, you know, you're doing a comprehensive plan for Coventry and I don't know how this fits everything.
Right now, we're not really dealing with the comprehensive plan right now.
I know, and you're trying to be specific to.
Not trying to rush anything.
This, I just don't understand.
We, we need to stay focused on, on what's in front of us and that's, that's what we're bound to. I mean, I, I understand you have some concerns and, and they're worthwhile. I'd be, I've been led to believe that this will have to be investigated, will have to be inspected through the state and they will manage those, just like the fire marshal will manage that part of it.
So would it matter if they had guardianship or no guardianship over these people with disabilities?
I don't work for the state. I don't have that answer.
They're not here for use to use it for.
But it is use as far as.
They're not here to use it for shared living arrangements. They're here to put a single family home within the setbacks on a property that already has two houses and a barn. They agreed to take the barn down and judging by the comments that we made earlier today in the meeting, we would be more in favor of taking the second longer house down and building this one. So they would keep two living buildings, living structures on the property. It's just one would be very, very nice, judging by the pictures that they, judging by the pictures that they submitted with their application.
It might.
They go and then, like I was saying earlier, if they do use it for a shared living arrangements, that's with the state, that's not with us.
Okay, then originally she was asking for multifamily. I just don't know how you are classifying what constitutes a single family home in Coventry. Not shared, I'm not talking shared living, I'm not talking any of that. What constitutes single family for you people?
One family and one house.
One family, okay. This is not one family and one house. Unless they have, unless they have guardianship.
Family house. You asked a specific.
So you're calling it that, not necessar, so it applies only.
Around the corner.
So it applies only to what is built, not who resides there. That's how we define it?
Correct. That's pretty much right. Use property, not use of the. Correct, Doug?
Yeah, you all have it correct. The, you're here to review a single family use. What's happening inside of that structure is only what's allowed inside of a single family house. Anybody that owns a single family house would be eligible to pursue, you know, providing care for others. They're not, that's not pertinent to this ask for the board's jurisdiction. You're only here to look at if a single family house and adding that single family house is appropriate as it compares to the standards of review, particularly the use standard, the use variance standard. What happens inside of the house is a state licensing issue and that's the same issue that would exist whether it's a house down the street or this house. Every house has the right to explore those options, but that's not pertinent to your decision or your jurisdiction.
And how did it get changed from a multifamily to a single family? What made you change that when the original?
I believe it was originally considered, the multifamily term was thrown out because it was two houses on the lot or three houses on the lot.
So we're just classifying.
Multi family, so like Mr. Cronin was saying earlier, there's houses down the street, lots down the street that have two houses on it. That is considered a multifamily property. Or you take the corner of Hill Farm, of Hill Farm and one seventeen with that one plat has all those mill houses, there's twelve units there. So that's multifamily property.
Okay, it just takes me longer to understand some things and I'm still, to be honest with you, I, I can't see it, but thank you anyway for your.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lady in pink. Have your name and address, please.
Christina Derziotis, thirteen thirty two Main Street, Coventry. Derziotis. D E R Z I O T I S.
Pick the mic up.
Thirteen thirty two Main Street.
You live next door?
Directly next door, yeah. So we talk all the time right over the fence. We talk all the time right over the fence that borders our properties.
Sorry. Just raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
No worries. So, yeah, I live directly next door. We share a fence line, we talk over the fence all the time. I'm very aware of what they're doing at their property and it looks great compared to what they, you know, were dealing with before. And we've talked about where they're putting their, the new house and I have no problem with anything and I'm the one who's directly next door. I have two little kids, I work from home, so, you know, if I.
When have you lived there?
Twenty seventeen, before the condos were even there. I was there for the construction of the condos.
Next to the driveway, next to the main house.
Yep. So I'm like right in between, it kind of goes like this. So I'm like right in between. It kind of goes like this. I was there for the construction of the condos when my kids were infants. So we went through all that too. But, you know, you don't stop people from trying to do things to their own property. That's my opinion. That's it.
Anybody else like to speak on this matter? Yes, ma'am.
So Julie's the owner of the apartment?
Do we have any, do we have anybody online? Nobody's online?
If anybody would like to speak who's online, please raise your hand through the Zoom app.
Nothing?
Calvin Brown, 13 Rivers Edge, Coventry, 02816.
Raise your right hand. Way to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do. My concern was, when we first came to the, to the meetings here, we were told by the proposed, proposal that we're going to put in that that second structure was strictly used for storage. It was boarded up. And we said, well, is there going to be three more apartments in that on top of the, of the unit? And they, at the time, we were told no. But now they changed that. Now they want to put more families in the second structure that was used for storage in the five-bedroom, one-floor structure. So to me, it seems like they're building an assisted-living facility next to our condominium development. So, that's my thoughts.
My opinion of what I've been told is, right now, we're talking about raising that particular building and the occupant owners don't want to do that right now. There's, we, I haven't seen any plans as to what they want to do with that, so I...
Well, we were told they were going to use it for storage.
No, no, I'm talking about turning, they want to keep it, whether they're going to keep it for storage or whether they, they intend on putting people in there. That hasn't been determined clearly yet.
That's what my point was when I, the first meeting. I said, are they going to make that into a multifamily, another unit? So you're going to have two multifamilies and another unit, so... They're going to build a regular compound there.
Certainly your opinion, I guess.
Yeah, so.
Thank you for your concern.
Okay, thank you.
You want to let the owner, she wanted to speak. Your call. You guys work together.
I'll just address some of those comments. You can see that...
Well, I was going to say, if you want, move the chair over near the mic or take...
And we actually, we have a handheld mic if you're interested.
Yeah, we have a hand mic. We'll bring forward. So the, in, in terms of Mr. Brown's comments, the house is cut, the long house, that's what we're calling it tonight, right? The, the long house is currently being used for storage and that is what I represented, but it's a home. That's, that's what it is.
Is it dwelling at one time?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think it's just a matter of a time perspective as to which answer is correct. Right now, right now, it's being used for storage, but they would like to keep it and use it as a single-family home. So that answers that. We did hear again that the dimensional variances are a concern. And, you know, we heard that in the first two hearings. And if it would be attractive to the board, we have developed an alternate concept for the home. And I think actually someone on this side of the board suggested it to me during the meeting to make the home go, fit in, fit into the variances and push a little further back towards the river. And, you know, maybe it's a, be a little bit smaller. And so we've developed a plan that would alleviate the need for any dimensional variances. And if that's a concern of the board and the neighbors, I would like to share it with you so that you could consider whether it would change your current opinion on whether the effects of this building would be detrimental to the neighbors. So if I could, I'm just going to identify a couple of documents and then give them to, to look at, okay?
Hold on a second. Can we do this? Can, because it's a change in plan. Let me make sure that...
I mean, the answer is yes. You can take any, the, the public hearing is open. You can take any evidence you want. Whether or not you'll be in a position to act on the matter tonight, based upon this evidence remains to be seen.
Doug, are you good with that?
I have no problems with him presenting any information, handing you any documents. You are not in a position where you have to try to digest them tonight. But if they're simple, straightforward, you can try to get an understanding and hear what he has to say.
Sure. So the, the first document is a revised floor plan. It shows the, the home being, you know, more narrow and more deep. Sure, yeah, that's fine. Can I keep one? Do I know what I'm talking about? Thanks. Thanks, Doug. You know? And so same number of bedrooms, you know, same, you, same the number of people involved, just slightly smaller in scale and without impeding in the 30-foot setback in any way. And then the second document is the placement of that proposed, this new proposed residence in the building envelope on the property. So it's in a very similar position to where the stakeout of the current house is. It's not, that part of it has not changed. And you can see that by looking at this document. But it, it no longer does require those dimensional variances. And so we, we undertook this in response to the concerns regarding the closeness of the, expressed by the neighbors from Rivers Edge. And, and we think that it, it would be workable. So, you know, we're trying to address these concerns as they arise. And in, in the last meeting, this seemed like the primary concern. But, you know, perhaps I'm, I'm a little dim and I missed the primary concern. But the, so if you would take a look, and really the, the design of the home is secondary. Really, the placement of the home on the, in, within the building envelope on the lot, in a position where the current stakeout has occurred, you can, you can see that it's 64 feet deep on one side and 60 feet deep on the other. Just a slightly deeper version of a, a very similar home. So not, nothing else would change other than the, the shape of the home. So the applicants would like to present this as an alternative to the board. So still a single-level, single-family house. Just no dimensional relief would be required. So 30 feet of setback on each side to the neighbors. That was the only dimensional relief sought, so that has been corrected. So Ms. Boashame again raised that issue tonight. So I, I thought that it'd be worth introducing this alternative to the board to get your impression.
You show me, come up here. You show me how to orientate this to 117 or Main Street. The garage is, so...
So the, where it says garage and front porch, on the bottom portion of the sheet of paper, that is oriented towards Route 117. And so where it says, back porch...
Take this and then put it this way, or this way, actually. Main Street's here.
That is correct.
On this, it doesn't seem like it, the same picture. It's close, but it's not perfect. And in the back, it shows a 12 by 20, looks like an outcrop or maybe a deck. But back porch...
I, I think a deck, right.
But in this picture, the back porch is back here.
I see recessed. It's, it's recessed into the building. Yes.
So this isn't really...
Well, the, the, the offer, the alter...
It's still going to fit within the, the boundaries.
Correct.
Industrial.
Yes, the, the offer to the board is to build a home of, with the same request, without requesting any dimensional relief. Right? So it would just be a use variance to the board. There would be no relief requested on the side. And maintain the 30-foot setback to the neighbors at Rivers Edge as they have expressed. So, yes, so the, the applicant has just handed me a revised, kind of annotated version, which confirms what, confirms what you had said. Yes.
Mr. Cronin, what's the distance now that we're talking about from the, I guess, the edge of the property where the condos are to the new house? Or where you're putting it now?
So at the back corner, Mr. Pelletier, if you looked at this map, it would be the northwest side of the, the home. That back corner is a little more than 30 feet, and that's the closest point to both sides.
Okay.
Doug, I've got a question for you. If building a five-bedroom house, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or if it'd be more on a building inspector, but to build a five-bedroom house on a half-acre lot somewhere, what, is there a minimum requirement for parking?
Yeah, you, it's a good question in relation to this property, one we haven't discussed. There is the concept, and as we've been discussing, what they're looking to build is a single-family dwelling. But technically, it's living next to other single-family dwellings. Our code might discuss the idea that each dwelling needs two parking spaces. I don't think that's the challenge here. I think they've got plenty of space to demonstrate that they've got adequate challenges. A five-bedroom, single-family dwelling and a one-bedroom, single-family dwelling will require the same number of parking spaces.
I wasn't sure if it was...
Yeah. And if, if you don't mind, for the purposes of the record, while I've got the mic, let's consider the first document that Mr. Cronin handed out, Exhibit 1, for purposes of the record. Let's consider the second document Mr. Cronin handed out, which was the larger map. Exhibit 2, for the record. And then Mr. Cronin handed out another document that you temporarily had. He described it as an annotated version of the house plan. We're going to call that Exhibit 3, just to keep things clear.
Yes.
That looks like a two-car garage now that they have on there. Am I correct?
So let's see, 24 by 21, yeah, I think, I think that could be a two-car garage.
Two-car garage.
Yeah. The, it's a parking spot in the town of Coventry. It's 9 by 18. So I'm just using that as a rule of thumb, you know, you'd keep, that'd be a two-car garage.
Mr. Cronin, the, the, the original structure was going to be 76 feet, 6 inches. Now, the new one, what's the width, what's the width on the, the new structure? Would you have that?
50, the, the width? So along the rear, there's a clean...
Same width?
Yeah, 56, 56 feet wide. That's on Exhibit 2, as Mr. McLean has just identified.
It's 60 feet inches long, do I read? Off the building, basically? So basically, we're losing 20 feet of, of the width of the building from the original proposed, 76, 6. We're going to 56 feet?
56 along the rear, yeah, because the front has jogs in it, so...
Yeah, but the width...
Width is 50, 56.
56 feet, thank you.
But Exhibit 1 shows 50, right? 6.
So the length is going to stay the same. It's just the width is getting...
Narrow, narrowed down, yes.
Thank you.
In the original proposal, what was the orientation of the house to 117? Did we turn to that?
No, it was, it was same, just wider, as, as Mr. Clu, you just, you know, just shortened it.
Wanted to get it...
Yep. Yeah, so the, it, it's, it's a narrower version and slightly smaller in square footage of, than the original ask.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if maybe everybody on the board would need some extra time to review this again. I think you are right. We're going to maybe, I hate to say, but pass it on to the next meeting so everybody here can review and make sure they're happy with what is here. This is a completely different change from what was here originally. Am I right?
I don't, I don't think it's completely...
You're trying to extend it so you can, you can...
Review.
Review it and have the ability to...
Have everybody review it and have the ability to take a look and come back.
I don't think we can do that.
Can't do that?
We can continue it again, but Mr. Pelletier won't be able to vote on it because he...
We're, we're here for the original.
Right, that's okay.
Members can continue it.
I have to tell you that I, and I'm not trying to rush anything, but I don't have a problem with making a decision on this, one way or the other, based on what's in front of me. In, in a nutshell, if I do it wrong, please correct me. We had a proposal that was wider, needed variances on both sides. Now they've fit it in. So that's taken one hurdle out of the, out of the equation. The only thing left here is the change of use.
That's, that's correct. I'd be withdrawing the request for the dimensional variance.
And to make it clear to everybody, if all they wanted to do was build a house, as we said earlier, for five people to live in it, and the, the act of being able to help assist people to live there, right now, it would be, now that you've corrected the variance, the side, the, the set, side sets, with just a, a change of use to put the house there.
That's right, still, the request is still a residential use in industrial zone.
Vote on it. That's the only thing that's in front of us. And, 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 and I, I don't want to sound condescending, but I'd like to stay focused and maybe not get down into the weeds. This is the minutia, but... Does anybody else have anything to say? Questions, comments? I'm going to let the lady with the microphone speak.
Yep, hi. Julie Bailey. Swammy in.
Can I have your address?
26 Brighter Lane, Warwick Island, 02886.
Twenty-six Brighter Lane, Warwick Island, oh-two-eight-eight-six.
Way to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. All right.
Go ahead.
So-
Shed some light.
I, I hope so, you know, uh, Tom kinda just brought up one of the major things I was gonna bring up, which was the, when we talked about it last time, and a few people talked about, you know, not wanting us, you know, the setbacks, and this is why we came up with this plan, so that was one of the things that I was gonna bring up, so thank you, Tom. Um, still wanna bring up that, also I'm trying to do is build my mother her dream house, you know, this is for her. She's on a three-level house in Weston Coventry. I'd like to get her closer to me. She's seventy years old, rheumatoid arthritis, she's fallen down the stairs once and broken her ankle. I don't want that again.
We'll have to swear.
Oh, and for my mom to age in place also. I just want it to be easier for her. Um, as far as, like, you know, everybody thinks that that other house was storage, but everybody knows people lived there. Uh, the, the, the windows are boarded because after the eviction, they went and smashed them. The windows weren't always boarded. Those windows have only been boarded since November. So, and because we didn't know what was going on, I mean, if we, would you replace windows on something that you don't know what's going on with yet? So that's why we haven't done that, but, I mean, I have friends who've, you know, I got my, you, you know Pammy and John, they took us little house and built it perfect, they went through all the right channels, and, you know, took a small house to a nice house, and like, that's the same thing that eventually we'd like to do with that, too. Um, it's already there, there's already power, there's already, you know, sewer, and there's always gonna be a need for homes in Coventry, as you know. But I just really wanna build, my, my mother grew up on this property, it's been in our family for a hundred and five years. You know, and we, we did not allow what to happen, happen. We fought a lot to change it. And when we knew we couldn't, we evicted. Um, I know that some of you of the board know me and know that I am not that type of person, and you know that I can talk my, my, conduct myself in a better way than what was happening there. Um, we have gone above and beyond to try and correct this and try to make everybody happy. Um, I killed myself, you know, you know, loads and loads, and to dumps and stuff, um, but I did just wanna bring up a few other things, too. So like, I did a little driving down, you know, Main Street. As I stated before, when you can drive down that road, you pass Dave's Market on the right, there's a bunch of houses for sale that have been knocked-down condition for years. You know, like, this is, this is like a common thing in Coventry, you know? More so with barns, but you're starting to see it more with houses. You know, same thing, Hopkins Hill right on the side of Dunkin' Donuts, that house has been like that for years, still standing, like, you know? And I understand, like, now because we wanna build there, it's being brought up, but like, that house would not be in that condition if we could get on that property without problems. Like, my mother's house is very well taken care of, my house is very well taken care of, our yards. But on that road besides those, so we have, uh, two driveways over. You have thirteen-sixty-eight Main Street, and then thirteen-sixty-eight A and thirteen-sixty-eight B. They're three full-size houses. Um, one of them's marked as a single-family, and two are marked as apartments, but they're full-size houses. You know, so, I don't know if like, we turn the ranch into an apartment, if that would help. Um, but that is a property with three houses on it, and it's two driveways down from our residence. And also, we're sitting right in front of that, is that little red, um, I don't wanna, yeah, garage, which is a business. You know, so I don't, it, that one's marked thirteen-sixty-four, I don't know if originally if it was part of that, or they are two separate, because they don't show a lot of good boundary lines, it's like-
You just don't, that whole-
Right. Right, yeah.
Something for the, the exception.
Yeah, and then, you know, you've got like twelve-eighty, twelve-sixty-eight, twelve-sixty-four, twelve-sixty, you know, what Moffett is, you know, and, you know, you've got the three-car garage, the big house, the business, the house in back, a house on the side, a house in- so I guess what I'm just trying to say, it's not really out of, like, it's not really out of the ordinary for this stretch of road. You know, and then, of course, we have the eighteen condos that are on the side of us, and you know, we're trying to do it the right way, too. We're here asking for the permission. We're gonna go through the, you know, we're zoning, building, fire. All that's gonna be followed, you know? Anything that is asked of us is going to be followed. And we're gonna put in for all the correct permitting, or, and everything, you know, we're gonna have all licensed people, I myself, as some of you know, am a licensed electrician. You know, I do everything correctly, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the wiring of the house, and I promise I will not point lights at anyone's houses, I don't ever do that, we would never in, uh, imagine doing that. Just wanna build my mother a single-family house on one level, so that way she don't fall down any more stairs and break her ankle. She's, this woman means the world to me. And that's all I wanna do. And that's it.
I don't have to hold the mic like it's gonna blow up. Uh, very much. Anyone else like to speak in lady in, in the back, in the blue? Or, aqua? Green, all right. I wasn't good at that.
Joyce Barthelamy, uh, thirty-three Rivers Edge Drive. Joyce, yep. Uh, Barthelamy, B-A-R-T-H-E-L-E-M-Y. Thirty-three Rivers Edge.
Raise your right hand. Tell the whole truth.
I do.
You have to say.
I guess my biggest question is if, when the attorney and everybody started speaking this evening, if there was a reasonable alternative to where the variances were being asked for to begin with, why is this being juke'd in now? Like, why wouldn't they have just had something that was reasonable within the parameters, rather than you folks having to be concerned about how many houses around the property? Which now it looks like that's being pushed to the wayside with this house that was storage, that may by, may wind up being a house again. So, I'm just like, I don't know, it just, it just seems kinda like a little bit of a, a shift.
I understand, no decisions have been made, so-
No, no, I understa- I understand that. I guess my, my point is, is that if you, if you really wanna see this magical house built, and I respect that, I've got, everybody's got, you know, aging family members or whatever. Like, w- why, why not design something that's gonna meet the needs of what you're trying to accomplish without having, you know, several zoning meeting variances required in the process?
I, I can't, I can't speak to that, um-
That's just what-
It, it, it certainly, it's, it, it begs it, you know, to why, but again, that's, that's-
Right.
We have to go with, with-
Right.
And, and they've listened to what we've been speaking about, and now they've tried to change it.
Okay. Okay, it's just, it just seems as though that alternative could have been presented long before now amongst all the time that's been spent on this topic.
Typically, when stuff like this happens, they have their dream house, their first house.
Right.
They could build anything they wanted, they would build the first house, and I don't wanna speak for the applicant. But then they realize, okay, we have two problems here. Number of houses on the property and setbacks. Well, we're gonna eliminate the setbacks by changing it, and it's not our dream layout, but it's something that could, we could live with or work with.
Yeah, but these drawings, yeah.
That's typically what happens when we compromise and stuff like that.
Right, but these drawings never came into place until the consensus amongst the board was pretty much that you were leaning towards having that second house taken down. And so that's my observation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
How you doing? My name is Ryan DeFranco, I live at six-fifty-three Hill Farm Road in Coventry.
Please raise your right hand. Way to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Um, just here for the applicant, um, I've been speaking with them for the last year, uh, in regards to building this home, and, um, wanted to comment on something that you said early in the meeting, Russell. Uh, as far as the in- infrastructure goes in the property, um, I wanted you guys to know, which I'm sure you're all aware of, when we design and submit the applications to the zoning and building and engineering department, we have to show where all of the, uh, roof runoff and water, and everything will be going. So that's part of the process, as far as the impact to the lot with adding the third home. We're also gonna be taking down an existing barn that, um, already has quite a large footprint or the roof runoff, so, um, as far as the infrastructure goes, it is something that we're gonna have to address when we're going into building the, the home, so.
I appreciate your input. Um, speaking of runoff, um, the house that we're very concerned about-
Yeah.
On numerous occasions, in my career, the fire department in town, we've pumped that house.
Yeah.
When it gets a lot of rain, the backyard of the house on our one-seventeen fills up with water, and then that house fills up with- is your engineering project going to try to alleviate some of the runoff that's gonna eventually run backwards towards one-seventeen?
So, when, when we do the engineering and we submit it to the engineering department, it's gonna have, um, some holes dug in the ground with containment, um, where the water's gonna be running off to, a lot of that property is gravel as well, but another thing that, um, Marjorie Bailey has been talking to me about is once we get through phase one of constructing the new home is trying to raise that existing home up and making it a drier, better space. Uh, also addressing the, the runoff water on that as well. But again, that's phase two, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. We've heard a lot of, we've had a lot of input tonight, and, uh, does any of this change or raise questions for you guys? Can we raise any, any more questions? If, if we put this to a vote tonight, we have to vote on the use, John.
I, just, for the record, I think we're gonna get that fired. Mr. Cronin would have to formally amend his application, that he was going to do that, have you officially done that?
Yeah, uh, well, the way I put it was that I withdrew the, uh, dimensional variance. If, if the, you know, if the board would consider the alternative plan, I would withdraw the, uh, dimensional variance request. However, Mr. Solicitor, I'll, I'll say it however you'd like.
Because the question I asked, Tom, is you, the way you're putting it is, if the board will consider the, the alternative plan, you'll withdraw it. If, and if they won't, you're not withdrawing it? We need to know what you want them to vote-
So are-
Vote on the alternative plan only if?
No, I, I, I do understand what you're saying, Mr. Gliosi, thank you. So, uh, we're amending, this is the cleanest way to say this, we're amending our application to the alternative plan that I've presented. So, that's, that's our new application. We're withdrawing the old application. So we're asking for a use variance for the alternative.
You've changed the, the diameters of the dimensions, and you still don't wanna take down the third building?
Yeah.
The older building.
The, the long house, as we've been calling it, that's correct.
Everybody understand that now? I'll entertain a motion to vote on it tonight. Or do we need more time? I'm gonna take it from you guys. Yeah, I'm, I'm good, too, but I'm, I don't wanna push anybody.
And again, just one thing, all the members of the public, make sure that they, um, if they wanna comment, make sure there's an understanding of the revised plan, and if there's any comments from the members of the public, a lot of people put time in. I think they get it, but I just don't wanna, I don't want you to just not offer them-
People that are in the audience, they understand what, what the, what, uh, Solicitor just said.
What the plan is?
You changed the plan. The new plan is that the, the dimensions of the, of the proposed house will be set within setbacks, where there is no setback requirement tonight. It's just a, a change of use. You understand that?
Unfortunately, if, if you wanna entertain, uh, conversations with the public, they need to come up to the mic and address themselves.
Come up here and-
No, that's all right.
Name and address, please.
Name is Eleanor Ware, I'm at twenty-three River's Edge Drive.
Raise your right hand. Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but this truth.
I do. Um, I understand going back to the original footprint, but w- when you're voting, are you also voting on the number of buildings?
We're not going back to the original footprint. We're going to the, the change, the amendment, so it's skinnier, and it fits within-
Right, I meant within the, that, that's what we had originally, thirty feet on each side, so-
Well, it was a little more than that, that's why they were asking for a variance on that.
So I'm okay with that, but I don't know, when you're voting, are you also voting on the number of buildings?
That's not before us.
That's what I didn't understand.
Thank you. Yes.
I wasn't hung up as much originally on the dimensional side of things, I know I don't live next door to it, but I had more of a problem with the use, adding the third structure to this property.
So did I.
Yeah.
So do I.
I, I still am, and, um, I don't, uh, I don't see myself approving it with three structures there. That's just my own opinion.
Three living structures, too.
Three habitable structures.
You staying, Arnie? In just a second.
Totally agree. We're back to the situation where see that long building remote my graph, inches away from the property line.
Yep. Lenny?
I agree with that.
Go ahead.
Did you guys understand what I meant by, like, the property two down that has three single-family homes on it? You're talking about a house that was built years ago, that's already, like, grandfathered in. So you're bringing that into the mix, like, being a reason, which is confusing, because as, um, Tom had brought up the last meeting, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-five Dixie Road in Coventry just got passed for that, and it's a tiny lot with three homes on it, one's not even finished being built.
Starts planning.
Yeah, it's what?
Planning, that didn't come before us. We haven't, we haven't had anything before us on Dixie.[1647.34]
Okay, I thought that went before, yeah. So...
Let me, let me just pose this to you.
Okay.
Instead of building a brand-new house, why not renovate the one that's got boarded-up windows now and, and make that bigger for your mom to be? I mean, that would be my throwback to you, is you're gonna spend all this money to put this barn, take the barn down and put this nice, beautiful home, which is what you and your mom want, and I'm, I'm, it's gonna make the place look a whole lot better, but
Right.
you're still gonna have this, um...
I mean, it's the cost of now taking down two buildings instead of one. It's the, it's taking away a home from Coventry, you know? Well, it, it was a home right up to November.
Right now, it's not.
Right, but I mean, I've seen worse homes rehabbed.
You're, you're adding a third structure to what?
My mom's just always wanted to be, like,
Not that.
near the, near the lake, you know?
You keep falling back to the, like, things that are other places in the town. They're not before us right now. What's before us is you wanna change and add.
Right, and one of the things was, does it make sense, you know, to have, you know, residential all around you and then just have one industrial lot smack dab in the middle, which was part of the use? So, like, okay, does it make sense? Like, no, no, like, it, like, what are we gonna put there? You know, like, a, a gas station, a Duncan, like, whatever would go for industrial use? Like, so, yeah, does it make sense to put a house there? You know, because if the town didn't merge it years ago, then we wouldn't even be here because it would be a separate lot. You know, we would just have to go to build on that lot. So, like, I just don't know why everybody's, like, so hung up on that house that was just recently occupied, because I've seen houses in way worse condition be rehabbed into beauty, you know, and
I don't, I, I can't, I can't, uh,
With...
but I, I can agree, other than the fact that I've seen it many times in my business going around town.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's just that, that's not before us right now.
Yeah.
To put, with what we're doing right now, forming a lot that we wanna put a third structure on.
Right.
And in, in my mind, what I'd like to see is, if you wanna call it a compromise, then call it a compromise.
That's why we got rid of the setbacks. You know, yeah, 'cause we wanted the big lot, so we said, "Let's think of a compromise for these guys and let's go with a smaller house." You know what I mean? That was kinda one of them. We're already taking down one structure that's gonna cost thousands of dollars, and now we want, now you wanna take down another structure that's gonna cost thousands. You know, so I thought, like, is there anything that you would allow us to use that structure for? Like, could that be a compromise?
Did you have a mind?
Can my mind redo it as, like, shop, like a shop, a, 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 a big storage, like, you know, a, a shed? You know, like, can we redo it, make it look beautiful as something like that? You know, she likes woodworking?
Fortunately, that's not before us right now.
Well, well, that's what I'm saying, is if down the road, if you allow us to keep that, can we utilize it as something else that would make you guys happy as another compromise?
It's, it's too hard to police whether or not people are living in there, people are not living in there, and it's a lot easier to police if the structure's not there. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So.
Motion to vote on this tonight?
I have a motion to vote on it tonight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We vote on this tonight. All in favor, a signal five. By the usual, aye?
Aye.
Was nay? You guys have it. Gonna do a roll call vote.
Through the chair, if you don't mind, I, I may interject as you consider your motion. Um, I think one of the most important components to consider in this motion is the use variance standard language, and that language is essentially reads that in granting a use variance, that the subject, land, or structure cannot yield any beneficial use if it is required to conform to the provisions of the chapter. Uh, the real test in front of you tonight is whether you feel as though there's been evidence provided that demonstrates that if you denied the use variance, the property would lose all beneficial use. So, if you denied the use variance, they would continue with a single-family dwelling, a building to the rear that is the potential to be a second single. They'd have that available use to them, and you have to decide if there's evidence that suggests that condition is a loss of all beneficial use. My re, my request of you is, when you consider your decision, reflect in your decision and make a statement as part of your motion, if you think the evidence you've heard rises to the level of demonstrating that the property would lose all beneficial use if this use variance was denied. So, does that, does that make sense? That's the, that's the key standard, and if you can offer that, that will help our decision in being, in tying it to the standards. This is a unique one where we didn't have a lot of findings that may support the direction of the decision.
So, the motion that we take now has to have some language that puts us back to basically...
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask my, uh, solicitor, in these circumstances, if, uh, if the board is considering a denial of this, if the solicitor has a preference between a motion to consider a denial of it, or if it's a motion to consider approval and then vote either way?
I kinda have the same concern that Mr. McLean is bringing up in, in understanding the approach of the board. So, um, is, is the, is the motion of the board going to be to approve the, uh, plan as submitted and then vote yes or no, or is the vote, or is the motion of the board going to be, uh, to approve the, uh, plan as submitted with the condition that the building, uh, be removed and then have, have a vote yes or no on, on that? Um, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure of the direction of the vote. Like, um, I, I mean, in the, in the law, they, they, there's a preference for you make a motion to approve and then...
I'm of the opinion that we can only vote on what's presented in front of us. And right now, what's presented in front of us, as I understand it, if I'm wrong, please correct me, um, that the applicant wants to tear down a barn and build a one-story home. Five-bedroom. That's what's before us. They did ask for variance, um, um, dimensional variance, which has been corrected, and we've accepted that, and that seems to be fine. So, the question before us, or in my opinion, is, do we vote on this with the information that was presented to us? And the vote appears to be, if we accept it, that we're gonna accept that there's gonna be three living units, or possibility of three living units in this one.
Well, motion to approve and then vote up or down?
Mo, we have a motion to vote.
Yeah, you, you, you're past that.
I don't really, Mr., I guess, Mr. Cronin raised two questions. You answered one. You're not gonna vote, you're not gonna add conditions that they haven't offered as an agreement. So, you just stick with what's presented.
Dude, that's, that's what, we're bound by that.
I agree. I just wanted, Mr. Cronin raised two issues. That was one of them, and the chairman has correctly, and I think appropriately, addressed that. Next is whether it's gonna be an affirmative motion or a negative motion. I think the suggestion is it should be an affirmative motion, a motion to approve, and then the vote is taken. It's either passed or failed. That, that's, that was the second point that Mr. Cronin, I think, Mr. McLean saw. I would agree, make it a motion to approve, seconded, if that's the case, and then it's up or down if you're voting tonight. And then you've gotta lay, um, as Mr. McLean said, I want the board, uh, you should obviously, all the evidence that's been taken throughout this tire, three hearings is all part of the record, but also you should comment on that standard. Has there been, or does there lack sufficient evidence to meet that standard? In other words, the applicant's got the burden to prove the standard, that there's no beneficial use if you deny this. Does that make sense? The applicant has that burden. Do you say a motion to approve or a motion to approve or deny? No.
No, it's...
A motion to approve and you vote aye in favor or negative. We just want, I think, that's the way the motion should go, and just then, as Mr. McLean said, I just want the board, I agree with Mr. McLean, to comment on the standard.
I think, uh, the, the, the request would be, uh, someone develops a motion to approve, and we're approving just a use variance. As the members individually consider their vote on that, we're asking for you to consider offering a statement as to whether, if you vote affirm, affirmative, that you're verifying that you've witnessed enough evidence to demonstrate the use variance. If you vote in the negative, just verify that you feel there's a lack of evidence to demonstrate that use variance standard. Does that make sense?
If we, if someone makes a motion to approve this, we have the opportunity to vote in favor of it or deny it?
Correct.
Pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt for a moment?
Right ahead, you're right here.
I ask for forgiveness. Um, uh, my clients are, are, um, uh, a little confused with, with the process right now, and I don't feel like I have, um, an adequate, uh, opportunity to advise them in this setting, and, uh, I would respectfully ask the, uh, the board to delay the vote by one month.
Tom, do you mind giving us more information on what confusion there is, and perhaps there's something that we can clear up tonight?
Um, I, I actually don't think that I'm in a, in a position, uh, to clear it up, but I can, um, so there's some, some discussion, um, about, uh, among my clients, uh, about removing the, uh, house, but, um, renewing their request for the side setback relief, um, so that the house, they could get the house, uh, that, I think, uh, Mr. Pelletier called it the dream house, right? And, um, and that, that's a complicated, um, uh, discussion to have, and, and not what I have presented to this board tonight. And so I would need an opportunity to straighten that out and, uh, to make a proper, uh, presentation to the board. If, if that's what they want to do, or otherwise, um, the board would proceed to vote on what I have submitted.
Chairman, if, um, just wanna add before you take, if you're going to grant Mr. Cronin's request, which doesn't appear to be unreasonable, um, I would also move to continue the hearing and the public hearing to that next meeting, because when I have a, potentially more evidence on a, another project, you gotta have the ability for everybody to speak on it again. I, I, you may be aware of that, but I just thought I'd throw...
I have no objection to that.
So, we have a motion that is made and seconded that we vote on it tonight. Do we need to rescind that motion?
Yes, I would ask...
If we're going to allow this?
I, I would ask the first order of business would be the, the movement to, um, to withdraw the motion and the person who seconded it, oh, it's already been voted on. You need, I'm sorry, you need a motion to reconsider. I apologize. It'd been voted on. So, you need a motion to reconsider the motion, you vote on tonight, somebody seconded it, you vote to reconsider it, and then you vote to...
Mr. McLean?
Oh, I think that that's not an unreasonable request. Here's my suggestion to the board. Let's say in a hypothetical world, the applicant comes back and they offer to remove a structure, and they offer another structure. My guidance to the board, if in that hypothetical situation, would be, you still need evidence to meet the use variance standard. Now, in another hypothetical situation, I want you to understand that the applicant has an opportunity to do this proposal with an accessory dwelling unit that would only be a dimensional variance standard. So, what I think, in, you have to fast forward and think, if they gave you what you want, are you ready to say yes to a use variance standard and, and make the claim that yes, all, the all beneficial use, or would your guidance to the applicant be, you can propose that exact same structure as an accessory dwelling unit in which now the use variance standard goes away, and you have a little bit of a different standard you have to hit and discuss with the applicant? That standard is really the most critical element, regardless of how many structures stay or go. And I need you to just be focused on that, that use variance standard is very hard to demonstrate, and this is certainly an application under a lot of scrutiny. So, that's my guidance to the board, is to think about that element. Even if you removed the house, does that change, and do you think the use variance standard has been met yet?
Well, I look at it this way. They removed the house. Right now, there's two houses, or back in November, there was two houses occupied by two families, essentially. They removed that one, there's still two houses occupied by two families, and now the two houses, one of them that was inches on the property line, is now 23 feet from the property line. So, you're giving a lot more space between and not really changing it too much, assuming you take out the building.
I don't disagree that you might say that's a practical improvement on the existing conditions, but it's still a use variance. You have to vote. If you do wanna consider positive, you have to look at the use variance standard and find a way to say there's evidence to suggest that whatever they come back with, that if you denied it, that the property would lose all beneficial use. I only bring that up because the application has a lot of scrutiny, and I think it's worth paying very close attention to that standard, regardless of whether the outcome on the ground feels more positive or not. That's my guidance to the board, is that, fast forward in a month, if you get what you're suggesting as a, as a compromise and a reasonable compromise, you're still looking at the use variance.
Um, is the next meeting September 3rd?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
The chairman, again, I, I, this is a lot of, a very important discussion. I think it's, it's a good discussion, but I think, uh, Mr. Cronin had made a very simple request. Uh, he's a very talented land use lawyer. If he thinks he can come back, he can certainly consider the comments made by Mr. McLean, uh, consider options. I mean, he's asked a simple request, can he, can he have a month? Um, you may still be at no, right? Or yes, whatever, wherever you are, but I, I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
I, I...
Lot of discussion going on. It's getting more complex.
Makes perfect sense.
So, we need a motion to reconsider?
So, it's...
Reconsider?
Yeah, it's, I think it's a motion to reconsider voting tonight, and then followed by, if you're, if you're interested, a motion to continue.
Do we need the person who made the motion? Okay. Motion's been made, reconsider.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded that we reconsider the vote in favor?
Aye.
Was nay? You guys have it. I will not entertain a motion to grant the applicant, um, another month.
Yeah, the motion to continue the, the application and the public hearing to September 3rd.
Make a motion to continue the application and public hearing till September 3rd.
Second.
Should made and seconded, we continue this project in open meeting and public discussion to September 3rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Was nay? You guys have it.
And, Mr. Chairman, again, I, I keep on jumping in, I apologize. Uh, if Mr. Cronin could do, um, everybody, uh, the courtesy if possible, if there are gonna be changes of plans or members, if they could have it, just somewhat in advance to the public, could you could have it in the planning office so people could see it? It doesn't have to be weeks ahead of time, but as quickly as you could if that's gonna happen. I just wanted to get all the public to look at it.
Sure, um, so I, no, not at all. And, and I think probably, uh, you can do that 10, have it available 10 days prior.
Yeah, that, that's reasonable to me. We can get that, uh, available so that it'll be, um, something we can view on the screens.
Want to, uh, um, hold the board, make sure that the five critical members are gonna be here on that day, because if they're not, then we have to pick another date. We need to do that tonight.
It is the Wednesday after Labor Day.
You actually need Mr. Ian Adi, Mr. Pelletier, yourself, Mr. Skulia, and Mr. Doggy. You five have to be...
Okay.
I'm okay.
Eddie?
Yes, but let's... We, we have that. Thank you.
We, uh, did we make the vote to continue yet?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Did we, did we make the motion? Did we actually carry it out? Most, yeah, 'cause I repeated it. Hang on. I see, I... It's gone. We're good. No, Ross. I'm the chairman. I only break ties. I'm, Bobby, I'm just, Bobby. Eddie, I'm just giving you a hard time, buddy. No, it's fine. It's fine. Harry was supposed to give me a mime, give me a printed sheet so I could, no, so I could, like, so, so I had an addenda that was, that was generic, you know? Yeah, in a minute. Michelle, are you good?
Okay.
Okay. Honestly. I have.
Yeah, I would be happy to have any individual discussions with members that have questions. But, you know, as a group, as the matter is closed, you know, we're going to just focus on the next matter for the agenda. But if anybody has any questions about any matter, they're always welcome to contact me individually, very happy to discuss.
Owner applicant, Dean and Sandra Capuano. Location is Apprezzas Park 305 Lot 79.2, 935 Fish Hill Road, Coventry, Zone RR Number 3. The applicant is seeking a dimensional variance to construct a 42 by 58 two-story barn that exceeds the allowable floor space. The barn will consist of 2,750 square feet, where 1,200 square feet is allowed. Therefore, the applicant is seeking a dimensional variance of 1,560 square feet. The applicant here. Please raise your right hand. Oh, give me your name and address first.
Dean Capuano, 935 Fish Hill Road, Coventry. 02816.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of the board?
I do.
Thank you. Please state what you want to do.
So just building a post and beam barn on my property. It's larger than that allowed 1,200 square foot, so between the two floors, it was larger.
And be so kind. Could you give me a reference point on Fish Hill Road, like where Weaver Hill intersection is?
So if you come, if you're coming up from Harkney Hill, coming up that way and you go down through the swamp, that first, that first, yeah, exactly. The first road, the causeway. I've never heard it called that, but that sounds a lot better than swamp, okay. It's that first driveway when you come up the hill.
On the right-hand side?
On the right-hand side, yep.
It was a trick question because if it's on the left-hand side.
Then it's, yeah, exactly, exactly.
So do you have anything there now?
Just my home and where the structure's going, just the garden that's getting pulled out.
What's your reasoning for doing this?
Just the post and beam barn that I've always wanted my whole life. That's it. That's the reason. Lot of storage, stuff in the garage, all that stuff. I've got a 16-year-old daughter that's getting a car soon, so we need more space. I think it's around 3. It was listed on the paperwork somewhere.
That's the total number of acres? According to the staff report, 2.8.
Are you going to put any electric in it or?
There'll be electricity for lighting and.
Any water plumbing?
No, no plumbing at this time. You know, I might put running water through there, I'm just not sure yet.
So two-story?
Yep, yes, sir.
What are you going to put upstairs?
Really, just storage is going to go upstairs. There might be a TV or things like that, but that's, that's it. A little bit of man cave.
No heat or?
No heat. No, sir.
This is a place to park your car, but.
Car, few tractors.
Right.
Yep.
Does your house presently have a garage on it?
It does, two-car garage.
Dimensionally, you don't need any variances at all? You're not going to be in setbacks at all?
No, we had, where I had it originally, we were going to have to do that just because of where the septic was on the property. It got close, so I actually moved it, so it's well within all of that. I didn't, quite honestly, didn't want to deal with that.
Really from the town's accessory structure square footage?
Yes, sir.
How many trees, if any, you think you're going to be taking down?
One cedar tree.
That's it.
That's it. It's a field now. Like, when I had built, yeah, when I had built that property and built the house in 2005, we took a lot out, so it's just, it's just a field. 24 feet, 3/8, right around 24 feet, not over 25.
So he fits.
Everything else.
Everything fits except that it's, the height, and that's not a problem.
It's, yeah, and it's just the total square footage of it. We've got new code in town that suggests the maximum square footage for an accessory dwelling, or I'm sorry, an accessory structure of any kind is 1,200 square feet. So he's seeking to be above that. It's fairly new code. It's come along with some of other, other related, was that?
Really small.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it would. My only suggestion to the board on this one is, I don't, I don't have any concerns. I'll let anybody in the audience speak if they do. We, I think that there could be a statement or two added to strengthen a few of the findings here so that if there is any positive consideration of it, that the decision reflects that. One thing that might be considered is, you don't have sufficient storage space in your, in your view of the property right now. So that would be a unique condition. The subject land and structures don't offer sufficient storage space. That's a unique condition that can be addressed through a dimensional variance hardship criteria. It wasn't your prior action, the fact that the property lacks sufficient storage, is that correct?
Right.
So that's not his prior action. And I think the other findings, he's done a pretty good job. Would you describe that the relief you're seeking of just doing a barn is fairly minimal for your needs in terms of, you're not looking to intensify the use of the property, you're just looking for storage, is that correct?
Not looking to do anything on the property other than just finding space for stuff and.
Side note, it fits in very well over there because across the street from him is the Fish Hill Farm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've got structures and a field and.
And it's going to be post and beam, it's going to be a beautiful piece.
Yeah. I noted the applicant did note that it's a wooded area, so I think, you know, I don't think that this is something that's going to be jarring to the surrounding area. We don't have concerns, but I thought it was worthwhile having a couple of those comments that we just exchanged on the record. Ken?
Thank you. You have a seat?
Good.
Anybody like to speak in behalf of this proposal, whether against or for? Anybody?
We have a letter, we have to, since it was with the package, we have to read it in or?
Yeah, if you don't mind, you could probably help educate me too on what the letter's stating.
Okay, it's from Scott Schmidt, MD MBA, Jenna Schmidt, 949 Fish Hill Road. So I'm assuming they're. Okay, so. Okay, so it's the only neighbor that can actually see it. The Town of Coventry Planning Committee, I'm writing to you in regard to a proposed barn structure to be built on the property of Dean and Sandy Capuano at 935 Fish Hill Road in Coventry. All right, I've known Dean for over 13 years, he is my neighbor and friend. We share a common driveway. I spoke to Dean and understand he and his wife plan to build a barn on the property. I have seen the plans and it appears to be a beautiful structure. From what I understand, a variance may be required and I was asked to give my okay in respect to the construction of the structure. Both my wife, both my wife Jenna Schmidt and I have no reservations about recommending any state or city issued permits, permissions, or requests in respect to, in respect to the structure. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call me. Conscally Scott Schmidt, MD MBA, Jenna Schmidt MBA.
Thank you.
Pretty clear cut.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, the shared driveway neighbor seems to be in favor of it, so it's.
Nobody here has a voice of opinion one way or the other. I make a motion, we vote on this tonight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we vote on this tonight, all in favor?
Aye.
O's nay? The ayes have it, so voted. We've done a couple of these, do we need to? Like, usually in the old staff reports, we used to have like, things that it's not a problem.
Yeah, there's a statement that staff have no concerns.
You need to bring that into the motion.
That staff have no concerns. Oh, you're asking about a no ratification.
Well, that was the second part of my question.
Okay, what was the first part? Yeah, yeah, so the staff report gives a little bit of guidance. What you're seeing is that staff reports now, the staff aren't jumping in and making a lot of the required findings for applicants, we're asking applicants to do their own findings. We have no concerns with this. I thought that the couple of the statements that we just made strengthened the informational basis you have to render some of those findings. But we have no concerns and I have no concerns with the ratification.
I just, only because we did it in the past, I want to make sure we're following.
Yeah, and honestly, the board, the board's culture on ratifications, I mean, you've already kind of established, you're not generally seeking ratifications as a normal process. I think you can vote to approve these with the assumption, moving forward procedurally, that you're not seeking ratifications unless there's cases where you really want to see it. Ratifications are useful if it's a complex wordy decision and you really want to see how it looks in writing before you make any final vote. Many of our votes, we don't need that. You feel, you generally feel pretty comfortable with the record that you feel. My only recommendation before you consider a vote, even though not many people here, you should always call for any public comment.
We did that and nobody wanted it.
Okay, great, that.
Okay, motion to approve.
I make a motion that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approved and also include the staff report into that motion.
And the testimony provided tonight.
And the testimony provided.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that we approve the motion as presented with the staff report. Do we have to talk about ratification?
No, I think you can, to be quite honest, I think you can drop having to waive ratification. If you, if the board feels comfortable that moving forward, you don't need it, unless you ask for it.
And if you want it, we just include it in.
If you see a decision and you say, I think we should, I think we should make this a ratification case, then that's fine.
Is the solicitor fine with that?
All in favor?
Aye.
O's nay? The ayes have it, so voted. Next applicant. 5.2. I want to see that. Okay, the next owner applicant is David Olson and Elizabeth Heron. Location is AP 33 Lot 6.13-38, 38 Hill Farm Camp Road, RR 2. The applicant is seeking dimensional variance to construct a new single-family dwelling, 42 feet from the rear setback where 90 is required.
My name's Dave Olson, 38 Hill Farm Camp Road, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Anybody else going to give testimony?
John Rockwell, 46 South Main Street, Coventry.
Elizabeth Heron, 38 Hill Farm Camp Road.
Please raise your right hands. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board? Okay, proceed, whoever wants to go first.
Okay, so this project involves the demolition of an existing dwelling at 38 Hill Farm Camp Road and the construction of a new dwelling and the alteration of an onsite wastewater treatment system. Apparently, there's a cesspool on the property. This is a smaller condominium lot. It's 12,916 square feet. And the house that was constructed in 1948. It lies on the westerly side of Flower Reservoir and it was historically camp lots owned by the Hill family and was converted to condominium land units in 2020. They're proposing to build a new dwelling 51 feet back from the pond, which is in this case, the rear setback and also 42 feet back from the pond. So given that the rear setback is 90, they'd be looking for a relief of 39 feet for the house and 48 feet for the deck.
Correct.
Yes.
Further from the pond and you're getting rid of a cesspool.
Kind of a no-brainer, but.
Yeah. I was just.
Oh, sorry. Kind of a no-brainer, but.
Doug, is that mandatory now 50 feet off the pond?
Can you ask that question one more time?
No, is it mandatory that 50 feet off the pond? You have to be so many feet off the pond.
For DEM? Are you, is your question relative to DEM?
Yes.
I'm going to let John speak to that, but I believe in pre-disturbed areas like this, DEM has different rules that can apply, but, and John, do you feel free?
So there is a 50-foot wetland buffer that DEM imposes and they have jurisdiction within 100 feet of the pond. This also is, it was previously used, so they take that into consideration.
So your grandfather did.
Well, yeah, and they also have, the Olson, Dave and Elizabeth also have approved wetland permit for this.
Yeah, the wetlands permit, we're still waiting on the, yes.
Yeah.
The proposed waste system would be a perfect.
Yes, yep. Yeah, the problem, the problem with the camp lots and anywhere around Johnson's pond is you have very porous soil. The state considers it a category one soil and that increases the radius of the well from 100 to 150. And there's no room on the lot to put the septic system, so. It's common land within the condominium and they have regulations in their bylaws that allow the septic system to be on. I'm sorry, what? It's a.
Do we have to carry out approvals through the condominium?
Yeah, 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 there. It was given as addendum information to the planning office. It was like a full-size plan, the tax certificates, and the HOA approval.
Keep forgetting to have. I figured that I have a big enough mouth that people can hear me, even my cousin. Anything that's being done over there is a great improvement, in my opinion. I mean, you know, I've been going down there since I was a kid and that wasn't yesterday, so. Eddie's still older than I am and so is Mr. Pelletier. But anyways, pretty straightforward. Anybody online? Okay, you're good? You want to? I'm good right now, you guys got, I'm going, we got one person in the crowd that wants to say something. Okay, have a seat close. Come on down. Name and address?
William Fosier, 39 Hill Farm Camp, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Your next talk. Raise your right hand, you did that already. Tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth for this board?
Yes. Uh, I live right next door. And this is the first time I see the print, so it's kind of unfortunate. Wish I would have got a print. That's besides the point. I didn't ask. Oh, well, maybe, anyway, I guess. I thought I would have got notified or something, but anyway, I'm here.
All you have to do is, the only thing that they're required to do is to notify you that they're having a meeting. They don't have to provide you um, with a print.
Okay.
You can ask for it, but they don't have.
I should have. Well, I just looked at it, okay, and I got a couple of questions and I just wanted to bring up a couple of other things too, okay?
Your questions.
Right, uh, I got some pictures here. One is, uh, there's no great, there's.
A set of prints to look at yet?
No, that, that is the print that I would like to ha, like to have seen, just that, okay, that would, that would be nice. But I thought, you know, I would have got notified about that, but I think, that's my first time I looked at that, so I do have some questions about that. I just wanted to. Okay, well, along my property line there, it looks like there's a bunch of little squares all spaced out.
Don't touch the screen, this gets all food you got. Can you go back to, do you have to stand there or can you come back to the mic so we can hear you?
Square, little squares on the print, I don't understand what those are, so I'm just questioning what those are.
Mr. Rockwell, can you come up?
So the line with the squares on them, on the plan is a limit of disturbance, so it's, it's a silt fence. Yeah, yeah.
Did you say that? Doesn't have any.
Yeah, yeah, that's great, that's great. Okay, now, I'm not against the improvements. I know he's going to be building a house and everything like that. What I want to see is a retaining wall. All along that side right there. I don't think they would.
Retaining wall where? Between your property?
I'll show, I'll show you, I'll show you.
Well, I'm asking a question.
All along the fence line.
Is there a retaining wall there now?
My fence. My fence, and over the years, they have been putting dirt up against my fence. So that now, there's this much dirt against the fence.
On their side?
On their side. I have some pictures and I, I, my fence can't be a retaining wall. It can't be a retaining wall. And there's problems in the area with water from houses being built. Couple houses down, about five, six houses up the street. Somebody tore down a cabin, built a house and all the water from his yard came out onto the road and last year, there was six inches of water on the road for six months. But there's problems in the area about water. And this year, the association got together. Now, that didn't bother me because it's up the street more, but everybody up the street had to drive through six inches of water for the whole winter and it didn't freeze. We were lucky, but everybody was up in arms and they changed the condo docs on the, and I have a copy of those too. Condo, condominium documents where anybody that does any improvements, the gist of it said that anybody that does any improvements and if they disturb the road or put any extra water on the road or cause any puddles, they have to fix it or the association can fix it and assess the owners. And they changed the condo documents and I have copies of that too for you to see, you know, all that, so they put in a lot of, we had a lot of changes to the condo documents in the last year because of the problems that people have been doing when they fix up their property.
Excuse me, that's a private road then, that's part of the HOA?
That's a private road.
That's a private road and part of the HOA.
Right.
Do, they take care of that road, correct?
We do.
You do, yep. Or the people there do.
We do, right. And there's an issue over there with water now because people are putting bigger houses and they, they're going for a variance, which I'm not against that. I'm not against that, but what I am against is that from the existing ground, which is on my house and there, I have pictures here and I'm going to hand them out to you. There have been piling up dirt against my fence and I've created, I had to turn my fence into a retaining wall over the years. And I don't, if they stayed, if that stayed a cabin over there, I wouldn't care. I would just leave it like that because I've, you can see, I put, I put uh, two-by-tens pressure-treated wood all against the fence so that I can keep it as a retaining wall from them putting dirt up against the fence. Yeah.
Just a quick question, though. I'm sure you have an executive board that is part of the HOA? You do, right?
The question is, you have an association, you have an executive board. It says, is that what you're saying?
No, thanks. Just a quick question for you. Have you presented this to the executive board of your HOA?
No, but there's, no.
But you should.
Specific, not my specific lot, no.
No, but the problems that you have and have you presented that to the HOA?
No, because I never, I, I, like I say, they've been living as a camp over there, no foundations. You know, there's going to be a permanent structure now.
I don't think it's a town problem. I think it's more of, your executive board is not performing the task of, of fixing what you're saying.
Well, no, but I would like to.
It's their responsibility to fix, to, to approach that.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I think that if you offer a variance, I used to be in the building business a little bit. If you offer a variance to someone on structure, size of a lot and stuff like that, there's a give and take. They might have to do things in order to get the variance. And you can see right there that my fence has turned into a retaining wall. It's basically a retaining wall.
I guess the question.
It's not going to last forever.
How come you did not present this to the executive board of your HOA?
I, well, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to.
I'm sure they, they could have gone.
Now is that if they put the, if they build the new house that your fence is going to suffer some damage or it's going to, to.
Well, no, I, this is what I believe is going to happen. They're going to put a foundation in and a foundation will go in, which is normal, and then it's only fifteen, twenty feet from me to you to my fence. Okay, and then on my side of the fence, it goes down this far. So now we have a grade coming from their foundation to my fence and then it goes down like you see in the pictures, then it's going to be my yard. And I don't.
Trying to get a.
That's not. That's not, I don't think that's, you know, out of the question, okay? I'm a little, I'm very concerned about that for a permanent, for a permanent.
Well, we'll ask them what their, what their opinion is.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, to another thing. Right, which it doesn't look, it looks like they're probably, it's trees, okay, it's trees.
Right here, a tree that fell on my house ten years ago in a hurricane.
Jimmy Hillone.
Hey, and uh, basically that's it. I was gonna, you know, I just think that I. Docs that have been changed and uh, if you want to look at this.
The question I have, that's all part of your bylaws.
Those are the bylaws.
That is the bylaws.
Right.
So they have to follow that.
They have to follow that.
Exactly, which I'm sure they're going to do.
Is this the section of, of, yeah, pill where the property was formerly, you, you, you owned the building, but you leased the land?
Right.
And then they, they split those lots off and sold them to, the land is now owned by the property.
By me.
By the homeowners now, right?
Right.
Okay. So you don't, you privately own the land now or is it part of the association?
No, we own the land and we own our structures. We always owned our structures. And now there's a, all we, right. It's a condo and the road is, is owned by the condo and the, uh, there's some common land and that area right here on the, to the left of, if you look at it this way, to the left of uh, Hill Farm Camp where they're going to put their septic system, that's common land. And they're going to probably be getting approval from the association to put that septic system in it.
Would that be part of the association's responsibility to maintain that road? Does, 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 does?
That's nothing to do.
The town does bow that road, right?
No.
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 It has nothing to do with, I don't think it has nothing to do with us.
No, no.
Yeah.
I would just like.
Strictly each of you.
Right. And, and we can even talk it over right now with them. I would just like to see them, I mean, I would even like to see them put up a fence. Okay? You don't want a fence? Because if they do, you know, they would take care of it if it was theirs, okay? And now, you know.
Anything else?
Not, no, that's it.
Mr. Rockwell, can you address any of this for us?
Well, if you refer to the site plan, uh, there are some large, oh, sure. If you uh, if you look at the site plan, there are a couple of large trees. There's a um, thirty-inch oak and there's a twenty-four-inch oak that are currently in front of the existing dwelling. And those are going to be um, taken out as part of the construction of the new house. So those will be, those will be gone. Also, um.
They can talk, you can't.
There's, there's the existing, I just wanted to also point out that the existing house has fifteen hundred and um, sixteen square feet and that's going to be removed and the new house is sixteen hundred and sixty-two square feet, so it's very, very similar in terms of um, runoff. And we are proposing a um, a sway, a vegetated swale along the road to, to um, accommodate, you know, runoff from the street.
The the question of rate level between his property and yours, theirs, so I'm assuming it's his fence, so it'll stay there.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're proposing that whatever we do with this new structure, that because it's the law, that the water will run away from your structure and not.
Yes.
I address, uh. You can do, absolutely.
Uh, as far as the fence goes, that fence is probably, I want to say twenty-five, thirty years old. Been there forever.
He, he installed the fence when he moved in. It was level before he moved in.
The yard is not that deep on the side of it. It may be on the side, there's a garden next to the fence on our side. Now we have a set of rocks and there's plants. The fence has deteriorated on its own for its age. Not because of water running or my dirt or any of that stuff. The fence up by the two trees, he comes in my yard and he puts up new pickets because the thing is so bad, they're breaking in the middle. Instead of replacing a set of fence, he takes a piece and cuts it and places it in because he doesn't want fixed fence. And as far as the trees falling on the house during the hurricane, it's an act of nature. Trees, I have pictures of my trees every year because I deal with this. I take pictures of my trees. I have them on my phone. This is what I do.
I'm just asking a question.
Oh, no, I know. I'm just saying, this is what I have to go through and I have to, I'm protecting myself. And I, I mean, for me to have to go take pictures, that's what I got to do. And the part of the water running off, if you look at the map, the bottom, it'd be the bottom right-hand corner oh, on the roadside, on the other side of, away from his house, my other neighbor's house. We have probably forty-two feet by ten feet by another forty-two foot triangle. That is when the water comes off the road, runs into my property, like you said, from the other properties that were built. We're not touching that. I'm leaving that there as a swale in my property that I could put a shed, I could do what I want with. I'm trying to help it.
Where does that water eventually get to?
It's, it's.
No, potentially, it's actually more of a retention, just.
Oh, so it.
It's like, it's like a, it's so sandy that it just saturates in the ground, but it holds a lot of water. And then across the street, like John said, we are going to put another swale in six inches deep by seventy-two feet by eight feet. The water can run into that too. And we've talked to the condo association and said, look, we, we understand that we had problems down the road. We're trying to help you by mitigating the amount of water that's running off the roads. That's kind of where we are right now. I mean, it's just, I mean, I'm, we're doing whatever we can to mitigate the water. The water in my property, when it rains, there is no water on my property, except for that one corner coming from the roads. My front yard is dry, my side yards are dry. There's no water on that property.
And so the executive board really has approved the plans that you have.
Approved.
Have approved that, yes.
Regarding the tree, the trees that he's concerned about are literally on what's now become the border. It's, there's a white pine and there's a maple that we planted when I moved in there thirty-two years ago. That, you know, the house, we've intentionally put away from the trees so that we don't disturb them.
The house, the foundation of the house is going to be approximately according to the plan twenty-one feet away from the side of the property.
Thank you. Go right ahead. Don't touch the screen. Thank you. Alex. Fees are ready. Fees on your property? No, that's not what they said. That's not what they said. Where it's going to be in a different spot. All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? I'll entertain, motion.
I make a motion, we vote on this tonight.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, we vote on this tonight, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye. Let's, uh, let's entertain a motion before we consider, uh, voting on, uh, the, the subject application.
I'll entertain a motion that we vote, bring it up to the vote, approve or to deny.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, per what we're hearing all tonight, plus the staff report, including the verbal information that we've been hearing.
Motion been made in second, that we approve the plan as presented, taking into consideration the staff report and comments from.
Aye.
Was nay? Why can't he vote?
The board has a custom of everyone says aye, but the truth is, is that it's the five primary members' votes that count, until a primary member's gone, and then an alternate vote counts, but everyone says aye, and that's fine, we, we, for the record, we count the votes.
Change that.
Oh, this is the Russ, the Russ Lachalade era, you keep your mouth shut.
Voted, voted, and you guys approved it.
We haven't got that far yet, sir.
What's that? We haven't got that far, we haven't taken the.
Oh, okay, but there's no condi- I just asked that there's a condition, that the slope does not go towards my fence after the, after the backfill, that's, that's only a building.
Can I make a, a recommendation with you, because it's an HOA, is to go to your executive board, discuss it with them, to see what you're gonna do, because this isn't the place to do that.
Enforcement, what kind of enforcement can you?
Well, you, it's not on town property.
Control over it.
Have no control over that?
Have zero control over that.
Do I have to go, I have to go to the association?
Yeah, your executive board.
Correct any kind of water problems that I have?
That's correct.
In their building right next to mine.
That's correct.
It's private property.
That road's private and your whole.
That's what I was asking, just asking for you guys to. Thank you, sir, um. Motion been made in second, that we approve this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was nay? The ayes have it. Good luck.
Next.
Next applicant, five point three, George and Claudette Coyne. Location is AP thirty-three, lot six point thirteen dash thirty-four.
Street.
Thirty-four Hill Farm Camp Road. Zoned RR two, applicant is seeking dimensional vase, construct a new single family dwelling, thirty-five feet from the rear property line with ninety is required.
George Coyne, number thirty-four, Hill Farm Camp Road. Yes.
Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Please, Mr. Rockwell?
Thank you. Okay, um, this is very similar, uh, ask, as the other one is, it's a rear setback relief for a house that's already there, that's gonna be torn down, and a, a new house built. In, in this case, the, um, the existing house is, um, only sixteen feet back from the pond. And the, the Coynes are proposing to move it back thirty-five feet. The unique, uh, situation with this property is that it only has a hundred and forty-two feet of depth from the road to Flat River Reservoir. Um, so where the location of the house, um, is it will be, um, roughly in the center of the lot to provide, um, space for, uh, parking in the front, and for the dry wells, the dry wells for the roof runoff. The Coynes, um, also have, uh, approval from the freshwater wetland, uh, program, DEN, and they also have approval from the outs program at DEN, and they have, uh, approval from the HOA as well. That's all I got.
Gentlemen, any questions?
I'm sorry, this looks exactly like the other one, am I right?
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's just a rear setback relief.
Rear setback, yeah, okay.
And this all came about because, um, they're considering, uh, this all one lot, this, this whole condominium development as one lot within the RR two zone, so therefore the RR two zone has a rear setback requirement of ninety feet, and in this case, the rear setback is Flat River Reservoir. So since the lot's on Flat River Reservoir, they need relief from the rear setback line.
And per the staff report, it's like, per the staff report, you're saying you, you're basically okay with this?
No concerns from staff.
No concerns, okay.
Anyone else in the crowd like to say anything? That's a good thing, it's all good, how about you, sir, in the back room, back, back row? Guys, you got anything?
I make a motion, we vote on this tonight, second.
Motion been made in second, that we vote on this tonight, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Was nay, the ayes have it. We have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
I didn't hear him.
Second.
Motion been made in second, that we approve this application as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Was nay? The ayes have it.
Should we include the staff report in that one?
Include, and, yes.
With the findings of the staff report? Yeah, the findings of staff report.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, that we, uh, call the meeting to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Was nay, the ayes have it.